Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you want to make yourself comfortable, we will be getting started here shortly. Okay, it is six thirty. We're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We are going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, chief. Okay, first up, we have acknowledgements of presentations. We have a presentation and recognition of Sergeant Ron Singleton, Chief Zuniga.
Mayor, council members, staff and citizens, good evening. It has been approximately sixty-five days since we lost our friend, coworker, brother in blue, husband, father. Ron Singleton came on board with the Castle Hills Police Department in June of twenty twelve from the Bear County Adult Probation Department, and remained here until December of twenty twenty-one. From here, he returned to adult probation where he stayed there for about a month before he realized he missed the real work. During the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two budget season, council awarded the police department with a traffic unit position which offered to Ron and he accepted. Ron managed that position well with no problems whatsoever. Some folks would thank him after he issued them a traffic citation. In fact, Ron was very, had very little issues during his tenure with this department. I was reminded of one of the times of one time when he burned up patrol unit. It sounds better. See him. It sounds better when, when stated that way, but in fact, the patrol unit had a defect that caused the fire. It was kind of sort of, it was sort of comical to see Ron's face where, where he was worried that he had burned up patrol car and relieved that he found out it was not his fault. It has been hard for us and certain that it's equally the same for his family, but I have learned to continue to celebrate Ron and not mourn him. I have Ron's picture on my shelf in my office and tell him good morning, Ron, every day when I report to work. I have invited Ron's better half, Denitra Singleton, to tonight's meeting so that we could present her with a small token of appreciation for her, for letting, for her letting us borrow Ron every day for eight hours before returning back home. This does not measure up to what Ron was worth, but just a token. From the Castle Hills Police Department and the Castle Hills Police Officer Association, we present you with the shadow box. You get a picture? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, Ms. Singleton. Not a day goes by that we're not thinking of Sergeant Singleton. Next up, we have recognition of former Alderwoman Dorothy Harrell, I believe there. Alderwoman has some family here with us tonight. It came to my attention that Ms. Harrell passed recently and I truthfully was not aware of her impact in the community until I was at the services and I saw and I heard and I read and it just seemed appropriate that we recognize her for everything that she's done, not only for Castle Hills, but for the San Antonio community at large. And we wanted to prepare, present this to the family, so I'm going to read this and then I'll present this to you all, and we have a copy for each one of her sons. We're saddened here, we were saddened when we were forming the passing of former council member Dorothy Harrell. Ms. Harrell served on the Castle Hills City Council for four years. Ms. Harrell was very active in her community. She strongly supported her husband, Dr. Raymond P. Harrell, medical practice by serving as president of the Bear County Medical Society Alliance. She volunteered for many years in the Castle's Elementary, Eisenhower Middle School and Churchill High School PTAs. She also served as president of the Castle Hills Women's Club and Guarding Club in addition to serving as a council member. On behalf of the City of Castle Hills, staff and citizens of Castle Hills, we extend our deepest sympathy to you and your family during this difficult time. Former council member Dorothy Harrell will forever be in our hearts. Thank you all for being here with us so we can give you this small gift for the family. Next up, we have the recognition of our new city secretary, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, I would like to introduce Maria Franco, seated right here. Everybody knows Brenda. Ms. Franco comes with us for over twenty-five years of municipal government experience, mostly in city secretary. She spent the last five years as the court clerk city secretary for the city of Bolvardi. The city secretary court clerk, excuse me, the assistant court clerk for the city of San Angelo for five years, and then city secretary of Hamlin, Texas for, it looks like fifteen years almost. So, in that case, I think she was a great candidate and a great choice for us to help us in the city secretary's office moving forward. So, you'll be hearing from Ms. Franco from time to time, and I think some of the things that we have achieved in the city secretary's office, she'll be able to run with it. And I would also like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Craig. She did two tours of duties with us. Three tours, sorry, three, sorry, I lose track, Ms. Craig. I would like down the road to do something to recognize Ms. Craig as well. She's here with helping with the transition to Ms. Franco. You know, Brenda's been invaluable to us and she agreed to come in and she helped me through the search and interview Ms. Franco. And, you know, we have her here today helping Ms. Franco to transition today and tomorrow. And Ms. Craig is always a phone call away, but yeah, she, she did three tours of duty, I said two, but this last one was a little longer than expected. It seemed to take a while to find the ideal city secretary we are looking for, and I think they found, we found that with Ms. Franco. And, you know, I always say if Ms. Craig is good, then we can move forward. So, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Ms. Franco, we're excited to work with you. Okay, next up, we have a proclamation for Red Cross Month. Red Cross is obviously one organization throughout the community and the nation, and it's, it hits particularly close to home here in Castle Hills because of everything that they have done for us recently, as recent as the winter storm in February twenty twenty-one. They were the ones that provided the cots and the blankets and bottled water to the city of Castle Hills when we set up a makeshift shelter in here for people that didn't have power. So, it's a, obviously an organization that does a lot for the community, and we're lucky to have the executive director for the San Antonio area, Daniel Martinez, and one of the board members, Luis Rodriguez, here with us today to receive this proclamation. So, I'll, I'll read this off and then come down there and join you all. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of the city of Castle Hills and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas the caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of the city of Castle Hills, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross can provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than a hundred and forty years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, the ordinary citizens in Castle Hills lend a helping hand to make extraordinary differences for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims and people with sickle cell diseases and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their family and caregivers through unique challenges of service using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies or deliver international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now therefore, I, J.R. Trevino, Mayor for the City of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas, do proclaim March twenty twenty-three as American Red Cross Month. Okay, next up, we have citizen comments. First up is Robert Nguyen. Please put your, tell us your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Robert Nguyen at two oh nine Garden View. First of all, I'd like to say that Dorothy Harrell was my neighbor for thirty years plus, and I appreciate her very much and her citizens and her family. Thank, want to thank you all. She's a great lady. Wanted also comment on the, you're going to be talking to the city of San Antonio about the drainage problem we have on Lock Hill Summa between Garden View and Glint Tower, which is obviously a problem as, but I also want to mention that I had notified Mr. Rappley earlier in the week that we've still got a problem with Carrollwood and Banyan, even though we spent, I think, about five million dollars working on that drainage project. The water is still going to be two or three feet deep coming down Carrollwood. When we get a heavy rain, it's, it'll float cars and neighbors have told us that, and I've seen it. But the drainage project at the end of the street is great, but it's city San Antonio water, ninety percent of it. And so they need to pay for that. It's illegal for them to dump their water onto us. It's not allowed. And so I've asked if y'all could pursue that with our city attorney and see what our possibility is to go to the city of San Antonio and get some reimbursement for that as well as looking at that drainage containment area to the north on of Lock Hill Summa at Carrollwood, the north, be the north, I believe it'd be northeast corner. I mentioned northwest corner when I sent a note to Mr. Rappley, but I think it's northeast corner. There's a, there's a water detention area there, but it's been silted in over the years. It's been there for probably forty years. So, it's not doing any good. So, that's one way of, at least alleviated some of the flooding on us would be to get that rehabilitated. And so that would be something I would recommend we look at as also. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. And next up, we have Ms. Kim Nguyen. Okay. And next up, we have Julie Jacobson. Okay, why, I'm going to just go down a little further, and if y'all don't want to speak, let me know. Dwayne Paulson? Okay, perfect. And, and, and Ms. Fitzgibbons, y'all just signed up too? Okay, perfect.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just so counsel for your information, the COs that were approved by the residents in November, and the next round of the COs funds the drainage for majority of improvements up Carrollwood and then reconstructs the rest of the street. So, that was part of the CO projects. So, we will have additional inlets put on Carrollwood to capture that water coming down.
And just to clarify, that's the next phase of Carrollwood.
Yes, it is.
Perfect, thank you. Happy to discuss that with anybody else offline, but it's not in the agenda tonight, so we can't get too deep into that. First up, we have the consent agenda. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
Mayor, council, real quick, the quarterly investment report needs to be tabled. So, sorry about that. We'll have it next month.
Mr. May?
Let me amend that. With the exception of what was mentioned by the city manager, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, second, my Mr. Paul, any discussion? On favor? Okay, and I can see how Ms. Danes and Mr. Joyce voted, but this, can you voice your vote, please? I?
I.
Okay, perfect and unanimous.
I.
Thank you, sir. And next up, we have presentation discussion on the City of Castle Hills Comprehensive Plan developed by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, Mr. Joyce.
Alrighty, thank you, Mayor. Since our presentation in December, we presented the plan in a number of different forums, some very informal, some formal, such as in a public forum, and some smaller forums to some of the committees and commissions. And we have lots of ideas and comments from the community, and the best of these have been incorporated into this final draft. Part of our recommendation, that is the CPAC recommendation, is the assignment of Parks and Projects Commission to be the stewards of the plan. In other words, they would be responsible for keeping the plan in front of council, for managing amendments, and taking care of any business with respect to the comprehensive plan. So, there'll be a transition from CPAC to Parks and Projects if council agrees with that. And so as part of that transition, we thought that Bernard Udomeyer, who is the chair of Parks and Projects, and Dr. Vic Sylvia, who is a member, actually an alternate member technically, to Parks and Projects, would share in the presentation with Maretta Scott, who is the vice chair of CPAC. And together, the group will make the presentation. Essentially, we're asking for a public hearing at this point ahead of adoption, and perhaps that could happen next month. And so at this point, I think by way of introduction, I'll simply invite Ms. Scott and Mr. Udomeyer and Dr. Sylvia to introduce themselves.
Good evening, council. My name is Maretta Scott, and I'm currently the vice chair of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, otherwise known as the CPAC. We are a subcommittee of the Parks and Project Commission, and we were asked to go ahead and put together a comprehensive plan for the city of Castle Hills. Now, it is time to bring that presentation to you at council and show you what the citizens have told us that they want. And so this evening, the first thing I would like to do is introduce Mr. Bernard Udomeyer. He is the chair of the Parks and Project Commission, so he is the one that went ahead and took, my apologies. He's the one in charge of Parks and Projects Commission, who then created our subcommittee to come up with this plan to present to you this evening. So, if Mr. Udomeyer, if you would like to come up, I'll let you introduce Dr. Silva.
Hello, thank you. Bernard Udomeyer, president of the, or chair of the Parks and Projects Commission. And we think this plan is good and it's good for the community to continuously improve. So, I want to introduce my fellow commissioner or alternate of, on the commission, Dr. Vic Sylvia. He's a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University. He has a medical research, he is a medical research scientist. He worked for thirty years at the University Texas Health Science Center. He now works for the Science and Technology Division at Lackland. He has written over a hundred publications, and Dr. Sylvia joined the Parks and Projects Commission last year. And he also has been a resident for Castle Hills for, since two thousand and four. So, Dr. Sylvia.
Thank you, Bernard. Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity to help with this transition from the CPAC to, back to the Parks and Parks and Projects Committee. Excellent. Thank you. This, the first slide shows the mission statement of the CPAC. And as you can read there, the purpose of the plan is to provide a roadmap for economic development and the care, maintenance, growth of city, cities, infrastructure, facilities, green spaces and services for the future. If I could just take a just a very short, brief moment to review the history of this. Back in twenty twenty, the, as it's already been stated, the Parks Commission formed that, the subcommittee, and they took on the task of writing this the comprehensive plan. And in twenty twenty-one, there, as you know, there, there were, there was a survey sent out, it was two hundred and forty respondents. There were a number of workshops that were held. The citizens became involved and through the recommendations of our citizens and recommendations of the, of the committee. Let's see, is it this? This one, there it is. We're going to have this presentation tonight, which will, it's really in three parts. We will try to get through this in about ten minutes if we can. The first part is to review the more recent updates to the comprehensive plan. The second part will be about those parts of the plan that make recommendations for how the plans will be implemented. And, and then lastly, we will be requesting a public hearing to take place next month if possible. Right. The most recent updates to the plans, because I know many of you have, have seen the earlier drafts and in December of this past year, there was a fairly complete comprehensive plan draft that was available on the city council website. As of today, attached to the agenda, there is the most final draft, most recent final draft. And in my opinion, it's in pretty good shape. Right, so as far as the most recent updates, there's a recommendation for urban renewal of the Jackson Keller area. And again, since Jackson Keller is a, is a boundary of Castle Hills, you know, bound, adjacent to San Antonio, we're asking that there'll be a partnership with San Antonio to help implement those, that urban renewal. Secondly, for zoning, the comprehensive plan takes a look at fairly detailed look at tax exempt properties and tries to simplify some of that language, particularly for special use permits. And that is still currently under review by the city attorney. And again, a most recent update is the development of a branding strategy. So, that includes a logo and branding to be placed at key entry points to the city. We've got a really good start with the current street signs, and we want to expand that as we'll see later on in the presentation. The, again, in the results of the, of the survey and workshops that were held, the CPAC noted that these, that these were the, some of the highest priorities, and those that will again, the comprehensive plan will provide strategic planning opportunities that will positively impact our citizens, visitors and businesses. And the, the higher priorities included improving pedestrian mobility, bikeway infrastructure, neighborhood connections and connectivity. For instance, connecting the parts of Castle Hills that are inside and outside Loop four-ten. And there's discussion about possible starting point is there at, at Honeysuckle and that connection through Honeysuckle to the, to the city center. Then creation and renovation, there's discussion about our, the city center, the city hall, and the green spaces, primarily the commons, and then discussion of improvements there. Another one was establishing Northwest Military Highway, Northwest Military as Castle Hills Main Street. That certainly makes sense to me considering all the businesses and resources that are there on, on Northwest Military. The comprehensive plan will study land use changes along Loop four-ten and the city's edges, and also will initiate economic development activities. Now, again, the the recommendations of the comprehensive of the CPAC that, you know, have been taken probably as far as the, as a CPAC can take it at this point, and they suggest that further studies be conducted, conducted by professionals, engineers, architects, designers, artists, as appropriate to accomplish these implementation of the priorities. We'll certainly want to continue and support repair of streets and drainage issues, incorporate safe walk and bike lanes in each neighborhood and facilitate that connectivity that I mentioned. Study street light levels and adjust as needed. My wife gets annoyed at me because I can always, I can't always find. the turn to get onto my street because this has a very dim street light there. So, and I'm sure that, that, that really warrants a lot of study. Next, the, we ask the City Council to continue to support economic development efforts and the comprehensive plan goes into detail. And continuing to work with the Economic Development Committee to accomplish that. To modify land use in major streets to improve buffers to streets, encourage different housing types and encourage additional commercial activity. Again, the, the plan goes into great detail. Modify the zoning ordinance to protect against lawsuits, again, for the tax exempt land. Media antennae, things of that nature. And, you know, special use permits. Now, next slide. Keeping the citizens' priorities and CPAC recommendations in mind, the comprehensive plan addresses the need to firstly engage consultants to study the renovation versus replacement of the City Hall building. I, we would recommend that there be a cost analysis study done to, to see whether renovation versus replacement is the best way to go. Number two, we want want to encourage the support of public art through the city. As you know, art enriches all of our lives. So and we should recommend, we recommend a public art master plan as well. All right. Now, the results of the survey and the citizen workshops determined the top three. These are the top three project recommendations. And those were economic development, green spaces and the Jackson Keller Urban Renewal. The, I'll just jump to the green spaces where it says, seek tree city designation. I didn't know what that meant, so I looked it up and the Arbor Foundation, the Arbor Day Foundation of America has this, on their website, they, they mentioned that in America, in the U.S., there's only 3,652 cities that have this tree city designation. And they have a quiz on the, says if you're, is your city ready to apply? Take the quiz and find out. So I took the quiz and I could answer yes to everything, except for one question I wasn't sure. It said that your city needs to dedicate an annual budget of $2 per capita for tree care. So I, I don't know if we do that. But if we, if we truly want to be, have the tree city designation, seems to me that's you know, would be something to, certainly to consider. All right. This is a a flow chart, tentative flow chart on how to implement the plan. So the Parks Projects Commission, we, we agree to serve as the stewards of the plan and to I want to get, I want to get this right because I like the way it was written. Hold on. Yes, though, we'd like to serve as potential stewards for periodic review and implementation of the comprehensive plan, once it's approved by the, by the committee, by the City Council, sorry. And then after it's approved, within one or two months of adopting the plan, the, the City Council would select one or more projects from the priority list. And then within one or three months, one to three months of that, and knowing that there were, there was funding for those projects, initially select one project for action. And there's also, I feel a need, we feel there's a need to hire a grant writer. Now, these two, those two items might be reversed where if, if there's funds for a grant writer at this time, might be a good it might be advisable to hire a grant writer at this time to be able to have the, you know, funds to be able to work on maybe concurrent projects rather than sequential projects. The the comprehensive plan actually identifies some grant funding opportunities from the Texas Parks and Wildlife, AARP, Alamo Metropolitan Planning Organization, and, and there are others. So once funding is, is secured for the projects, then the city manager will execute the projects as approved. All right, this graphic shows how the, how the process could work. And the Parks Projects Commission would work in tandem with the Economic Development Committee. And we would both work with the grant writer to help secure the funds. Then we'd communicate with the city manager who would communicate with, with the City Council. And there's communication all around. This was the early version of this presentation because I think the, the current version that is of this comprehensive plan that that is currently attached to the agenda has had very good grammar, spelling checks, formatting. But I do know that the CPAC is, is still working on the, the final, final draft. But in my estimation, here, we're 99.9% there. Okay, and finally, I want to end by saying we, we request a public hearing. The Castle Hills Parks and Projects Commission, on behalf of its Subcommittee, the CPAC, requests that the City Council schedule a public hearing in April for public comments on the proposed comprehensive plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Sylvia.
Yes. Oh, yes, please.
Counsel, I just wanted to clarify one point real quick. When it was stated, hire a commissioned grant writer, I think hire was not quite the correct word. It would be a point or select a grant writer that was paid on a commission basis. If they were able to secure the grant, then they would get a percentage of that grant as part of their commission. So the word hire doesn't mean that the city is going to pay them upfront, but they would be, we would put out the, hopefully, Mr. Rappley, under direction of Council, would request grant writers to apply to be appointed to find us grants. And they would only get paid once they found the grants for the projects. So I wanted to clarify that since it said hire on the presentation and that wasn't caught before now. So I just wanted to clarify, there would not be a new position to hire. It would just be an appointment or selection under your direction through the city manager for someone to write those grants on our behalf of professional. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
And then if they do a good job, you might consider hiring them, hiring them later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sylvia. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Joyce? Obstains?
No, Mayor, as I did, might mention one thing. Dr. Sylvia mentioned that this is our final draft and we're expecting grammar, spelling, things, et cetera. But there also, they should counsel decide that a public hearing is the way to go. There may be comments from the public that need to be incorporated. And there may be other comments from council as well that might need to be incorporated. So we know we're not quite done, but we, we hope that we're pretty darn close. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Okay, we'll move on to discussion of possible action on setting a date and time for a public hearing on the proposed Castle Hills Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, Council, per our city attorney, Mr. Schnaw and Mr. Fletcher, who is here. This requires, under our local government code, to call for a public hearing if the council is wanting to adopt it. So it calls for a date, time and place for this comprehensive plan to be adopted, but we have to, you have to call for a public hearing first.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel, any motions?
I may, Mayor, that we hold a public hearing to consider the comprehensive plan at the next council meeting, which I believe is April 11th of 2023.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Joyce for April 11th.
Second.
Second by Mr. May, Mr. Isbrandi.
I did want to make a comment prior to that motion that I, I do have a little bit of apprehension about how active April is in terms of Passover and Easter. And then the run up after that to Fiesta of how much attention we might be able to get of the community during between the religious holidays and the social holidays to be able to get this done in April. So I just put that out there as not a hesitation, but at least something I think for us to think about. Will we have the attention of the community to engage them to seek the kind of input that we would want during all this other seasonal activities?
Thank you, Mr. Isbrandi, Mr. Paul?
I'm not sure I understood the motion appropriate or properly. Town Hall would be separate than the next council meeting. And the way I heard you was we incorporating the two of them.
And so if I can clarify, Mr. Joyce, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're talking about a public hearing as opposed to a town hall.
Okay. With a public hearing.
That was my intention, that it would be a public hearing as we do in many council meetings ahead of potential action on the plan.
All right, so you want a public hearing at the next council meeting?
That was the idea. Sorry, yes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? On favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, let the record show Mr. Isbrandi abstained and that passes. Next up, we have discussion, possible action on resolution number 2023-03-14-A regarding annual review of the city's investment policy and investment strategy, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor, Council, this is just the annual review of our investment policy. Pretty much every March, we've reviewed and either made changes or amended the investment policy. We have no recommendations to amend at this time, so it's just a matter of approving in its current form. I know we've discussed about the treasurer position. And my recommendation and also talking to Mr. Schnaw is we may want to wait until after May to have that up for consideration again. But for now, I think it's a matter of just proving, approving this like we do annually. Or audit purposes as well, because our auditors look to see that we've approved this annually as well.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrandi?
May I ask why the, the recommendation not to, to consider this aspect of it? Because if we were to approve this tonight and then a month from now, we want to, to bring this up, we have to come back and do this all over again versus our annual review was, what was the, the thought process of why we would not discuss the?
I, I think again, because the current treasurer is Mr. Paul, who after May will not be on council.
Right.
It doesn't mean we can come back and amend it. And you could table this and, and do that later. It's just trying to stay on top of things and make sure that our investment policy is amended according, I mean, is approved accordingly. Because right now, we don't have any other amendments to do or changes.
Right, and I don't have any objection to anything in the investment policy, except for the fact that we had talked about whether the treasurer position as we have defined here should be reconsidered. And I'm, I'm just not sure I'm understanding why if this is an annual action, we're not going to, we would opt to approve this tonight. And then in a month or 60 days from now, say, oh, let's bring it back up. We need to make a change, sort of, we want to change.
If council desires, we can, we can table it and come back with that.
Yeah, I mean.
Corporation or thoughts, then.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just sharing a thought like the other.
I, I think it's also because we've traditionally adopted or annually reviewed and approved the investment policy in March, so.
Mr. Rappley, a question, is it necessary, given everything that we have going on with the certificates of obligation, that we adopt a reaffirm it, so to speak, this month? And not table it?
I, I think, um, well, I mean, I think it's, it's appropriate to do that now, just as an annual review for approval, because we are past the ratings. But again, if we want to take a look at that and just do it at one time, then I can work with our city attorney on that and, and bring it back, so.
Mayor, it's, it's, I don't have an interest particularly in tabling this. It's just the issue of how we define the qualifications to potentially be treasurer has been the subject of discussion a number of times. It just, I, maybe it was a wrong assumption on my part. It seemed like this fit hand in glove to be considered tonight.
I understand and I agree. Okay, well, we have a item in front of us, do we have any kind of motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move that we do adopt resolution number 2023-03-14.
We have a motion, Mr. May, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Paul, any discussion, Mr. Joyce?
I'm sorry, I was going to second it, but I'm remote here.
Okay, and do we have any discussion? On favor?
I.
Unanimous, thank you, Council. And next up, we have discussion of possible action on the expenditure of funds under the American Rescue Act, Rescue Plan Act, commonly known as ARPA, Mr. Rappley? Excuse me?
Thank you, Mayor. I always appreciate your audio video skills. As we mentioned before, and we last talked about ARPA, I think it was December, I had promised Council around March to bring forward an agenda item, discuss our ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds further based on, you know, to date, what we've been, what we have done with the ARPA funds. And then basically where we're left with the funds available. And then talk to you all as council about some expenditures, projects moving forward. What I did was ask the departments to list some projects or expenditures they have. So we would probably have this scheduled in the budget season, but I'm trying to get ahead of that as well, because there's some things that we could probably utilize ARPA funds for. But again, I'm going to leave that at the council discretion. I have a list by department, and so I wanted to go through those tonight with you. This slide is, as you know, just for background purposes, you know, what the intent of ARPA was to speed up recovery of economic health effects of COVID-19 pandemic. ARPA funding has been provided by the federal government due to economic crisis created as a result of the COVID-9 pandemic and limited allowable uses. You know, majority of cities, counties across the nation got ARPA funds and, and came down to mainly population size, how much each was going to be appropriated. The City of Castle Hills received 1,150,000. This was done in two equal dispersments. I think we received the first one back in the FY21 budget and then last year in the FY22 budget. As you see, the funds must be obligated by As you see, the funds must be obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and at the end of the period of performance by December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. And then again, um, I wanted to start this because the time to plan is now. Um, not say that we have to go out and spend all this money right now, but I want to make sure we have a plan in place. Um, and we do have some time to formulate that plan and figure out what we want to use before um, the end of twenty twenty-six. Uh, ARPA funds have broad categories, um, that's been spent, uh, specifically lost public sector revenue, support COVID nineteen, public health, economic response, provide premium pay, uh, investments in infrastructure like water, sewer, utility lines, broadband, cyber security, cybersecurity, uh, cyber security improvements, and of course, the infrastructure under um, water and sewer. Um, and I think some drainage has been uh, allowed in certain areas. Um, I know they changed the uh, sort of guidelines last year and made some things broader, um, I know Chief Ludwig is our kind of point person on our upper funds. Um, he does our reporting and gets basically all the updates on, you know, what you can and cannot use our ARPA funds for. Um, most cities right now are doing um, revenue replacement, I believe, as a response to what they've been using uh, ARPA funds for. This right here provides a quick overview of what's been sent. Um, you know, we worked to um, address critical needs with the first year, uh, we spent the two hundred ninety-seven thousand and some revenue replacement, because we did lose some areas of revenue related to court and other activities during that budget season. Uh, we did some fire station improvements phase two, we got generators for City Hall for the fire department and did a complete replacement of the aging IT infrastructure all servers, that project is completely done, and we're um, um, I feel modern uh, from that standpoint, having ten, twelve uh, age-wise servers is not the best practice for an organization, and it makes us susceptible to um, cybersecurity and ransomware and those kind of things. Um, we've done COVID-related overtime reimbursements in the fire department, uh, at times when we had officers, firefighters out sick with COVID during that time, and then one-time employment, uh, one-time payment to employees under the ARPA for the premium pay utilized in December. And the twenty-three adopted budget, which we're currently in, we've programmed a hundred and nine thousand of that related to purchase of further uh, getting equipment for the fire department, some public works, as well as expenditures related to emergency management services. Um, again, I think after the winter storm, uh, we had emergency management committee uh, that's worked to update our, our emergency management policies, and then reviewed things that we really need during emergency manager situations. Um, you know, first and foremost, I, I know the generator for the city hall has been a, a want for ten years, and um, I'm glad to say that we have one now, um, because the one back here is from nineteen seventy-eight, and uh, if it goes down, uh, I was told there's no parts to fix it, correct? Correct, thank y'all. Um, as a result of the funds in FY twenty-two and twenty-three, the city has the ability to utilize funds in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand from ARPA for future projects. So what I've done is identified ARPA expenditures by departments, and so I, I say administration, um, I, I concluded some of the comments there, and some of these are just um, targeted projects, expenditures, um, some have um, a real good number to it uh, from that standpoint. But again, these are things that would be brought up during the budget discussion as well for what I believe, and the department directors believe uh, as critical items um, for operations um, throughout the budget season, so. Um, replacement of computer systems, uh, this is something that um, again, we've taken the time to replace our entire IT infrastructure, and the desktops that most and all of City Hall employees have been on have been um, probably six, seven, maybe eight-year-old desktops. Um, we've had a lot of problems with um, slowing down, uh, just generally um, non-operating systems are not efficiently working well. Um, one of my goals as city manager, and this, when I walked in the door five years ago, was not in place, and I'm gonna get this in place is to make sure that we've replaced all the computers this year, and that we have a schedule moving forward for four or five years, and we know exactly when, who needs a new computer, or what department needs a new computer, and so that can be funded appropriately, because that was not in place uh, before I arrived, and um, that was a very common um, system in my previous cities, we would know exactly when there was a replacement for someone's desktop or laptop. And now we've migrated to laptops for mostly everyone, because what we learned from the pandemic is if we have to close up shop and go home, we can work from home, because we proved it for a year. So. Another item here is in the comments, we've talked about shade structures, possibly solar plant panels included. Um, some of the prices I've uh, looked at and already talked to Parks and Projects Committee about um, and some ideas. That was sort of a medium range, um, I know the mayor has asked me to look further into um, how solar panels can be implemented with some of these shade structures out there, and so I think as we move forward, that's something to bring into the fold there. Um, structural and foundation assessment of City Hall. Um, I, I think um, this is something that's very important that needs to be looked at. Um, since my time here, we've spent money to improve the exterior, the interior. Um, because essentially, this is an aging building, and um, for some of the processes and services we have here, it's not the most effective building for what we do. Um, my goal is to look at the building as a whole, bring someone in uh, to look at the structure and especially the foundation to see if we can improve upon this building um, at a certain cost before we start looking at long-term improvements on it. Um, it's something I wanted to do when I first got here, but um, uh, it was taken out of the budget five years ago by that previous council, so we would have learned a lot from that, and it's unfortunate that it was taken out, because we would have known by now which way we need to go on particularly this building. Um, building improvements related to the expansion of city offices, we've talked about this again, we wanted to be able to put court office and have a dedicated conference room. Um, I've held off on previous years that we've budgeted money in the seed to do it, because um, we wanted to look at the building holistically. Uh, another item uh, would be a code enforcement vehicle, uh, the one that Mr. Myers is in is, has a lot of miles, it's aging, and we want to try to tailor that to maybe a truck, a used truck down the road, uh, because he's constantly in alleys and other places that would require that. Public Works, uh, F three fifty, Mr. Harada has asked this in the budget a couple of times um, in regards to getting a new field truck uh, to replace the current F three fifty. And then um, as we've outfitted the rest of our buildings, we need a generator for public works, and so that's something that's on the to-do list as well. Fire, um, I've asked Chief Ludwig to provide uh, items within the departments. Um, at the top of the list, he has a replacement of the two thousand nine Rescue one oh nine uh, with a rescue pumper. Um, I think we've touched on this, maybe a little bit on last season of the budget, uh, and talked about how that might be structured. Um, and so I wanted to make sure it was included. He has other items here listed, um, the life pack, uh, the Lucas device. Um, the lawnmower for the station, paint the exterior of the fire station. Um, another critical one is a replacement of overheads garage doors, I know they've been going out from time to time, and the response time is key, because they have to get out of the truck and roll those doors up. And so those doors are aging, and those need to be replaced, because that does impact when people, they're responding to people's homes. Uh, specialized rescue equipment, um, we've already budgeted some, and this is some further tools they may need for situations. And then a diesel storage tra- uh, tank, this is something we identified in the emergency management, to make sure we have on hand diesel fuel for um, all of our trucks, all of our equipment, so we can operate when uh, the power is out in places and gas stations are closed. Um, with fire and all these, I'd, I'd defer to the fire chief just to expand on any of these you might have questions on. The police department, radio replacement, uh, this is for both police and fire in combination, but my understanding, Chief Zuniga has been notified that there's going to be some uh, upgrading needing to be on the same as um, I believe Bear County and um, other agencies, and so um, he has penciled this in as something that is, is pretty critical, that needs to be done sooner than later. Um, so that I wanted to make sure that Council was aware of this item as well. Uh, again, as I recap, the city has the ability to utilize five hundred fifty thousand in ARPA for future fund expenditures or future projects. Um, what I have put there is, you know, we also have funds remaining in the community infrastructure seed fund as well, um, and around three hundred and fifteen thousand to utilize in the future for any one of these projects that are listed as well. Um, I've also put there for expenditures, like we've mentioned on this list, vehicles or computer systems that we've upgraded, we do have a workstation fund. So we do have other outlets and other funds to, in order to achieve what we need for uh, departments requests, but I just wanted to make sure they were able to provide you all everything that, that they need or, or would like to have from a, what they call a critical standpoint on some of these items. Uh, and this is just showing you other outlets to where they can be funded or have been funded on an annual basis. And then again, um, you know, I would like to open the discussion with you as Council um, on projects that you'd like to see, including in ARPA. Uh, and if you do, we, we definitely like to have staff review those and come back to you with potential feasibility costs. And then um, like I said, if staff is here to answer any particular questions on any of those expenditures. Um, I wanted to try to get this to you early, because um, there might be some things that we bring forward in the next few months that might require a purchase via the ARPA, so I wanted to be able to do those separately, and then we're gonna have budget discussions come June, July, and so I want to encapsulate these uh, requests, which may include ARPA funding, or it may include somewhere else in the budget, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand?
Uh, Mr. Rappley, a, a couple of questions. Um, if you were to take all of these items minus the pumper and add them up, did you have a total on what the request from the departments is?
Um, if I had to do some quick math, um, the sixty-five, uh, eighty, one sixty, uh, two ten.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot and test your.
No, 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 um, you know, uh, radios, uh, minus that pumper, three, two, three, so if I had to guess, three fifty, three sixty right now, minus the pumper.
Okay, so just about three fifty, three sixty, and we have a pool of five fifty, that's just quick math.
Sure.
And that's, that's fine, I'm just trying to process this in my mind, so I think what would at least be really helpful to me would be to uh, have you review these requests that have come in now and help prioritize them in terms of what is critical or essential, what is, you know, nice to have, what is a luxury to have, if anything is a luxury, as we try to fund city government, so that as we think about other aspects that might come up here, as we think about the next budget year, and the fact that we're going to have a shortened budget cycle with a nine-month budget, as then we move to the new calendar in a twelve-month, I think it'd be really helpful to be able to look at this on a map, if you will, and see, again, what's critical, what do we need to do now? Where we have these dollars, what is something that is not necessarily critical, but we might want to consider in the next budget cycle, cycle after that, and is there anything that is just uh, an add-on to the?
Well, again, I think it could be done through like a one, two, three, that one being the highest priority, you know? Um, I think, I think our, our, our department directors can, can come up.
That would be, that would be really helpful.
You know, for me offhand, um, you know, when I think about that, and, and Mr. Zamiron, I have him working and overseeing the IT arena. Um, we're working to do the replacement, I mean, that's critical, and I think that um, why I said I might be bringing things further, because as we evaluate, uh, get an inventory of what we're replacing, I'm gonna be putting that on uh, for fur- future approval. Um, so I can tell you that's the number one for me, and that will probably happen this year. But I can talk to um, Chief and Chief and Mr. Harada about, you know, what they feel is number one, whereas we can bring it back, we can actually bring it for approval this year, uh, do a budget minimum in the end of the year, and things that, like you said, uh, maybe not as critical or as desired, or um, can just be incorporated in the budget next year.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be great and would be really useful to us, the other question I had was about the pumper. Um, and I, I apologize, Chief, because I know we've had this discussion before during budget hearings and other times. Um, what is the desirability in cycling in, if you will, that new pumper, in what year?
As far as.
When, when would you want to put it in service and take?
Well, if the, the actual making of the in, uh, of the pumper itself, um, we're looking at about eighteen months, twenty-four months, so we're looking at about two years if we ordered it, started ordering it today.
Okay.
So, and again, as that goes, also, the funds would not be needed to be paid until delivery.
Right, do we have a line item in our budget in which we're pardon me for saying it, this swirling away dollars every year in anticipation of your heavy vehicle replacements along the line here?
There are funds available at this time, I do not know there is line item for replacement of pump, I don't know the exact amount at this time, but yes, there have been some funds that have been put set aside for.
Yeah, we, it's, it's like future fire vehicle.
Yeah. You don't happen to know where that is off the top of your head, do you? Again, just a few now, random.
Yeah, I mean, again, in the, in the continued uh, for future vehicles.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't know the exact amounts, but I can find that out, um, I think we, in this budget this year, I think we appropriated maybe forty, fifty thousand towards that.
I believe so.
Uh, this year, and we have been on average thirty, forty, fifty each year, since I've been here, appropriate funds in there for um, cycling out next vehicles or, or um, trucks at that matter, but um, you know, with the pumper truck, I think that's a little bit different from the standpoint, and as you recall, Council, you know, the platform truck is, um, I think this is the last year we pay the note on it, I believe. So we've been averaging about seventy thousand as a note um, to pay that off. And I think this year is when we pay that off in this budget, so that frees up some dollars that uh, may be available to um, you know, finance a, something similar with a, with pumper truck.
Right, right.
Um, but it is, I think this happened right before I got here, um, with the, with the platform truck, I think there was like five hundred thousand put down, and then financed the rest. Um, so there's different mechanisms and options for doing that. Um, but I think at this point, um, I'll, I'll let the chief kind of uh, continue to tell you sort of the why we need to replace that, and um, make sure you have all the information you need before something like that is decided upon.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm not looking for a justification, we've had the conversation, I appreciate the fact we've had the conversation. I'm just thinking in terms of, these are the big ticket items that really have an impact on us and looking forward in the future of the city of how we fund these, so um, clearly, this is a, you know, i- if we were just to go with this item, it far exceeds all the ARPA dollars we have left. I know that's probably not your suggestion here probably, but just, you know, thinking what are the, how do we fund? How do we look forward in anticipation of what, again, are essential needs, when these needs will take place, knowing that it's gonna take two years to actually get that vehicle in service once it is ordered? Uh, what other vehicle uh, issues uh, replacements come up after that? And what the funding is like to be able to do that, so that we don't strap the city down the road um, at any point because of these, these obligations we have to have state-of-the-art equipment, which I know we all uh, strongly believe is exactly what the city and our city employees deserve very best, but I just want to understand those implications. Okay, thank you, that's, that was, that was what I need, thank you.
Yeah, and I think again, you know, when you compare cities, you have to compare cities of what funds they got from ARPA. You know, I'm, I do know some slightly larger cities that have purchased ambulances and other fire trucks with their ARPA funds, but again, um, we did not get as much as, as a city maybe twice our size, so, or three times our size.
Mr. May?
You're asking for uh, ideas or suggestions, uh, I have some very specific ones. I just got confirmation today that there is a pathway for municipalities to apply for federal grant program. I just got confirmation today that there is a pathway for municipalities to apply for federal grant programming for electric vehicle charging stations. The window is going to close very quickly. So I'm requesting right now, we put this on the agenda item for April. And I will get the specifics on what we need to do, what we need to present. But this is in the larger umbrella of how we might be able to use ARPA funds. Because I don't think they're mutually exclusive. If this is a matching grant, maybe we could use some of those funds. Pair it with the other federal grant program and then get EV charging stations. This goes into the second point that I want to make, which is I'm interested in using ARPA funds for gifts that keep on giving. For example, you listed one of the things we need is a traffic patrol vehicle, thirty thousand dollars. It makes sense to me that at least some of the squad should be electric vehicles. There's no issue about performance. I can attest to that, zero to sixty like that. That's a gift that keeps on giving. You pair that with an EV station that's stationed here. We're in business. The other thing I would note is the masterful job by the by the committee that just reported a few minutes ago is very aspirational, and I applaud them. But for that city, that kind of city that they've envisioned, we're going to need some other types of infrastructure that are not going to cost us a lot of expenses. For example, infrastructure that is solar panel-generated electricity would be perfect for illuminating some of those things that are listed in that master plan. For example, pedestrian crossings need to be illuminated to be safe. Cutting down our long-term expenses for the commons, cutting down the expenses for here. I know we've talked about it before, but to me, it's always shocking how much it, it costs in electricity for a hot summer season. Reverse it in the winter. So I guess on my, I guess, desire or, or priorities, I would want to focus on things that would be gifts to this city. Not just now, second generation and potentially third generation.
Thank you, Mister May. Any other comments? So I believe that we, this, we've gone through this money already. Spending some of the federal dollars already once, actually several times. And I think the first was the CARES Act, which we utilize, and then we've also utilized some of the ARPA dollars. And I personally believe that we need to do a better job of getting the dollars back out to the citizens and making impact in their lives. I think that was the true intent of these dollars. One of the things that I have been saying, and I think this is kind of in tandem with, with Mister May just said, was doing the solar panels in the commons that can double as a shade structure. We're spending approximately eight to nine thousand dollars a month in electricity here at the city. If we can make this one-time gift from the federal government pay on in perpetuity, I think that's the best way that we can ensure that we're being good stewards with these dollars. And at the same time, the, the, the community will get a benefit out of that. I, I, I'd like to see a preference towards that. I, I know fire is a big consumer of electricity because they're there twenty-four seven. So if we can offset that expense for them, that frees up dollars going forward for whatever else they might need. But I just think it's an opportunity for us to be smart with these dollars right now and get the biggest bang for the buck.
And I know there's been discussion about solar panels on this building too. But again, unless we do the due diligence and figure out if, if structurally, it's something we can put on this building, then I, I don't think we do it unless you know, we get a green light from some type of review of this particular building.
And that's not particularly my interest. I think, like I said, we can double them as a shade structure in the commons. That's really the best of both worlds. Mister Joyce, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment that one of the sustainability recommendations in the comprehensive plan is that we take a look at putting solar panels on the fire station. Because apparently it has the perfect orientation. But Mister Rappley made a suggestion about due diligence. We, we would need to do some due diligence because of course it's not a new roof. Been up there a long time and whether or not it's, it's worth putting solar panels on a roof of that age. I think needs to be looked at. But I, I think that would be a good benefit to the community. And it kind of is a segue to something I wanted to say in terms of benefiting the community. And that is, you know, all of these many priorities and hopefully before too long, council will suggest, yes, Mister Rappley, please move ahead with one, two, or three, or just one, whatever it might be. There's going to be needed some engineering money to help develop a, a scope and budget for those projects before council will obviously approve it. So I think that would be, I think the community would respond positively if at least some of that money could be set aside for engineering to provide analysis of some of these priorities to see about what it would take to get them implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Joyce. Mister Rappley, I mean, do you feel comfortable with the direction you've been given, or would you like to see a more formal direction?
No, no, I think, I think I've got it. And, and it's just us, the staff going back and doing some homework. Like I said, my intention was to get ahead of this because I didn't want to drop these all on council in June, July and say, these are all needs and like Mister Isbrand said, we are going to have a shortened fiscal budget instead of twelve months. We're going to have a nine-month budget. So we need to make sure we have the right expenditures and the critical expenditures in there for that nine months. And then if there's some things need to wait, then we can plan accordingly when we start the new fiscal year for twenty twenty-four.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister Rappley. Now for the discussion, we'll proceed. Discussion and possible action on the purchase of additional electrical components for the placement, for placement on the commons. Mister Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This was brought to my, well, I'll take a step back. When we did the comprehensive, I say master plan through the Parks and Projects a couple of years. It laid out some ideas of what we could have the commons look like. But one of the things that was mentioned was improving the electrical infrastructure out there. I was approached by the Castle Hills Community Organization, the Women's Club with the events out there about some of the incapacity of electrical equipment out there. Not enough plug and play for vendors, for concerts, for those kind of things. And so I got with Mister Harada and absolute power here who came up with a plan to improve the commons with additional outlets. And then the ampage, the amp needed to hold wattage for concerts and vendors and other areas. Mister Harada can expand on that if you want. And when I was approached by this between Miss Crawford, Miss McClellan, that the Castle Hills Women's Club is donating five thousand towards this. And if council were to approve this, they can get started tomorrow and have all these improvements in place by Fiesta next month.
Thank you, Mister Rappley. Mr. McClellan, you, you bringing us a big check?
Not yet, not yet. No, I just wanted to say that I'm here to speak on behalf of the Castle Hills Community Organization and the Castle Hills Women's Club in favor of this electrical infrastructure improvement. We have a number of community events that we, we provide for the community all year long. And we've had multiple incidents, you know, that have happened. But just to give, give you an idea, we have concert in the commons twice a year, major event Fiesta Castle Hills. We have Splash Day during the summer, Truck or Treat is, you know, ended up into an evening event. And, you know, as an example, we've had problems with concert in the commons, with just things, you know, the electrical failing. Because I don't know y'all are aware of this, but there's multiple outlets all around the commons. But we can only use two or maybe three at a time, and depending on what we have plugged into them. During Fiesta Castle Hills, we advertise live music. Well, in a couple of years, it's died because power something just happened and it failed and we scrambled to get things back on. What really worried us is during the Splash Day early setup, we had the Little's inflatable setup and some of the members' children, well, of course, got into play early. Well, guess what? The power failed and all of a sudden it started to deflate with children inside. And so just so you know, this has been an ongoing problem for many years. And I know it's been discussed and tossed around. But we do feel, both organizations feel strongly about this to the point to where the Women's Club is willing to partner with the city and provide some funds. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and Council, in the, in the backup, it has description of the different installs and different outlets that will be done from that standpoint. I'm not an electrician and nor I'm going to go into detail of what it might look like. I just know this will be very beneficial to the commons for future events. And what I've recommended is this come out of the seed fund for the remaining balance outside of what the Women's Club has donated.
Thank you, Mister Rappley. Mister Isbrand?
Mayor and Council, I'd move that we approve twenty-nine thousand dollars from the seed fund and accept the gracious donation of five thousand dollars from the Women's Club to move forward with these infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Mister Isband, Mister May.
Second.
Any discussion? Mister Joyce?
Oh, just a dumb question. I'm sorry to hold you up here, guys, gals, but just want to make sure that we're putting in a hundred twenty-five amp panel. Just want to make sure we have the capacity for that in the existing electrical system that we're going to tie into.
I can't speak to our capacity, but it's my understanding that the contractor did come out here and take a look. I think they're also the ones that did the generator. So they, they should be decently familiar with our system, but I would suggest that Mister Rappley can double-check that before we sign the proposal, if that makes you feel better, Mister Joyce.
That sounds good. Thank you, Mayor.
Mister Joe, Mister Paul?
I was just curious. Can Rick offer any thoughts on it that he may be aware or not? I think it would be wise to get some information from.
You know, I, I would like to say that Mister Harada had started on a lot of electrical improvements out there a couple of years ago because there was like three or four plugs and that's about it. And so you know, Rick and his guys have outfitted the commons with lights now, solar lights. And so there's only so many options that you can plug in currently. So go ahead, Mister Rada.
A, a, as she mentioned here, yes, there has been a lot of fitters. As myself, I always so, also wanted to upgrade it. I was here when they first installed that, and that was in two thousand and five, because I was team supervisor in two thousand and three. The, the upgrading is going to be, I, I mean, a higher grade. The box that we have outside, as she mentioned, it's only a twenty amp per outlet. So there's six outlets total. And then the big one that's over here, I installed some over here for the, the band stage area that it comes from the public works. But the one absolute is going to be putting in. So it's an incentive to us that the box that is on there right now, they're going to be removing it, upgrading it, and then also having extra outlets for future improvements if we have something forecast that we're going to be putting out there. But e- there's going to be put other outlets on, on each area there that are going to hold another twenty amps. Plus the bandstand also too. There's going to be another quad box put there at the Christmas tree area as to where she has mentioned at the, the these balloon things have flowed up. There's going to be an extra quad boxes there also. So that'll be an extra forty amps that is going to be there because that's what's there right now. But as I mentioned, the breaker box will be removed and an upgrade will be placed there.
So do you feel, have you reviewed this plan?
Yes, sir, I have.
And you're comfortable and you think it'll do the job?
Yes, sir. I walked with, I walked with the, the tech.
And when they come here to do the work, you'll be working or not working, but you'll be advising or be with them and know that they're doing what what we're supposed to be doing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Harada. Any for, Mister Joyce?
One last question. Once all of this is done, is there any spare capacity for additional outlets? Should we need that in the future?
Yes, sir. As I mentioned, the, the box is there now. It's going to be pretty much almost double its size now. So they'll have the, the, the amperage bakers that has, you know, existing in the commons. But then they're going to add the ones they are going to place there. Plus, there'll be extra breaker rooms for.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. Sunday morning, I was going by here on the way to church about eight o'clock. And I saw this fellow out there painting, painting the sign in the commons, Sunday morning at eight o'clock. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Mister Paul. And thank you, Mister Harada, for everything you do. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Council. And next, we have discussion and possible action on a request to waive the garage sale permit fee for one day citywide garage sale on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Miss Daines?
Good evening. Would you like me to read, to read this?
However, if you want to just give a brief synopsis, I think the agenda item speaks for itself.
Okay, so this is something that we have done many times in past years. We've had a citywide garage sale and at least three times to my knowledge, we have waived the fee to go along with the citywide garage sale to encourage participation mainly. And then the Women's Club and the Castle Hills Community Organization is behind, in support of this motion to to waive the permitting fee. I think the Women's Club is going to put map, maps together. So anyone participating will be put on the map and it will be on the website and you can pick up a paper map to drive around. So I think it would just be a really great community activity for people to clean out their closets and their garages. And the more participation we have, I think the better it is for our little community. And I would love it if we could help them out by waiving that fee to get more people to participate.
Perfect. Thank you, Miss Daines. Uh, Mister May?
Mister Mayor, move that we waive the garage sale permit fee for the day of Saturday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three for any Castle Hills resident hosting a garage sale on residential property.
Thank you, Mister May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mister Isbrand? Any further discussion? Mister Rappley?
Mayor, we will still ask residents to fill out a one-page permit for, for garage sales. And so what we're going to do is put it on the website under Newsflash. In regards to this event, there'll be a link to the application that you can fill out and email it to the permit clerk. Or you can print it out, fill it out, and then drop it by our office just so we can have documentation. And of course, it will help put the map together of participating homes.
Thank you, Mister Rappley. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on appointment to the Parks and Projects Commission for a place for Mister Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an opening for place for Parks and Projects Commission, a result of Mister McCormick's resignation. And I would like to take a moment to thank Skip for all of the hard work he's done for a number of years with Parks and Projects. I think of him really as kind of the father of Parks and Projects. He was there right from the beginning. He helped us merge the Parks Commission with the Ad-Hoc Projects Commission and turn it into Parks and Projects. So he and he was very faithful for years, served as the president and secretary as well. So my my hat's off to Skip McCormick for all of the fine work that he's done over a long period of time. And then I would also like to appoint as a permanent member, Dr. Rick Sylvia, whom you met a moment ago. Dr. Sylvia is currently an alternate member on the commission, but has worked really hard. And I think we would be very, very fortunate to have him on the commission as a full-time member. So I'd like to appoint Dr. Sylvia and hope that you all will agree with him.
Thank you, Mister Joyce. And Dr. Sylvia, I, I'm assuming that you're taking that appointment, correct? Thank you so much for your continued service. Next, we have discussion and possible action and appointment of an alternate to the Parks and Projects Commission. This is my appointment. I haven't heard from anybody that wants to serve. Please. Mister Sylvia, Dr. Sylvia?
And I think he, because of his thirty years of war experience and uh computer specialist, USAA, and uh have lived in Castle Hills his entire life. Well, since he's been married. Uh, Judy's been here her whole life. I I I heard him, uh, since he's interested in doing it, uh, I would recommend him for nomination to
Thank you, Dr. Sylvia. I usually like to uh make sure that they're on board, but I know that Mr. Crawford is everywhere when it comes to Castle Hills, so I'm I'm sure that he would like to continue his service in this capacity. So I will appoint now Robert Crawford, and for those of you on Zoom that didn't hear that. Okay, thank you, Dr. Sylvia. Uh, next up, we have announcements on Mayor and Council members and items of community interest. Mr. Isbrand?
Um, thank you, Mayor and Council. This past Sunday morning, with the time change and all, it was still very dark um that the uh Castle Hills Police Department and Castle Hills Fire Department uh participated in an active shooter exercise at Antonian High School. And Mayor Trevino, Mr. Rappley, and I had the uh privilege of being there to witness them in action. And I wanted to take this opportunity, first of all, to thank the chiefs, Chief Zuniga and Chief Ludwig and your command staffs for arranging this, putting all that work into this, and to all of your personnel for your participation in this. I wish everyone in Castle Hills could have been there to see this because it was really a striking reminder every day of the risk that our police officers and firefighters experience when they go out there. And I think those of us who see a patrol car pass by our house every day or see the fire truck going down the street as it's checking fire hydrants or something, don't really pause to think enough about every single minute that the city personnel are on duty, they are putting their lives at risk for us. And the work that they did, the effort they put into this was just really profound. So I wanted to take this moment to thank you all for what you did um in arranging and executing on that exercise, and also to take this opportunity to thank your departments and all the city staff for everything that you do for us. We are truly grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. And if I may, I I'd like to, yes, please, let's dig around the bonds. I also want to thank the Antonian Drama Club. Um, they were in full effect by playing the part of victims, uh, both in their acting and in the makeup, which was, I told Mr. Isbrand, I was in the room when everything was going, I started making my cortisol levels go up, and I was sweating. Uh, but it's, I I I say this in jest, but the reality is, it really helps our first responders practice the way that they play, and knowing that that really uh adds a whole nother level that we they wouldn't typically have without the uh the effort and the help from them. We, I think we have a small clip, right, Chief Zuniga? Which one of these is it, Mr. Rappley? This one right here? I'm going to share this so that our colleagues on Zoom can see this. Hopefully. That that was my short cameo in there as a, as a, as an actor, and the students clapped as I was caught and taken outside. Uh, Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I I don't think we say it often enough. We have roughly, what, sixty, sixty-five total employees in the city, in that range. It goes and comes based upon whether we can get the proper employees and whatever, but we're very fortunate. We have very good people. Uh, I I I'm appreciative of Brenda filling in and doing what she has done. She's has illnesses, she's had a lot of things, she's, well, anyway, but she's been very, very helpful as a city uh secretary. We've had Nora doing yeoman's work without help. She's got somebody to help her now and things like that. We're we're very fortunate, and they take their job. This is their family away from home, I guarantee you. And it's really a pleasure to work with people like this that have that attitude towards what can I do for you? What can I do for the city? I just wanted to mention that never, it doesn't, I don't think it's said often enough, even though we all sit up here and know that that is so true and often say that, but I'd like to say it publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
In addition to that, I want to compliment the uh group that came together for the proposal. That I know it's not finished. I know we're going to have a public forum on this, but the master plan has been talked about for years. And when I look at this, when I go through this, and I see this, I'm proud not only of the committee, I'm proud of the community that has so many individuals that care about our future. It's not a week that goes by that I don't get at least one, if not multiple phone calls from potential business owners and potential residential buyers, and they ask me the same question, why should I go to Castle Hills? Why should I make that selection? This is Exhibit A right here. So I'm looking forward to having a further discussion. I encourage all the citizens that may be listening in tonight or here today. If you have additional comments, uh, let's let's talk about them. Let's get it integrated, and let's get it done.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Just want to mention that uh our next Castle Hills Business Association mixer will be this Thursday evening at five-thirty at Bilyet. We would love to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Daines?
Um, I I agree with a lot of the, with everything that um Councilman May said. I I think that we live in an amazing city. Um, from the employees to the citizens, everybody is being so involved now, and I'm so happy, and I think that we showed that on Saturday morning. The um community organization put together a great bike and walk event, and a lot of people showed up, and it was really fun to see everybody, and we got some of the, some some really nice weather, and I was glad to see that. And then I've also wanted to mention that the community, the Castle's Community Organization is also um going to host an Easter egg hunt uh coming up on April second.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. I will put that in the calendar. Um, kind of tying up everything that all my colleagues just said, we have an amazing community, and I think that's uh the special part of Castle Hills, but it's important to note that if it was just a great community, that's all we would be. It's really the staff here and the team that make up the city of Castle Hills, and they're the lifeblood and the difference between calling the police in San Antonio where they're inundated and short-staffed and calling the police and fire in the city of Castle Hills where we have a two or three-minute response time. So thank you all so much. That being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, by Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. It is eight oh eight, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Safe travels.